Ten, twenty, twenty-five. To order at seven P M. We're gonna get that down once. Ground, please call the roll.
Yes, uh, Councilor Rob.
Yep.
Councilor Ison. Mayor Lockenbro.
Here.
Council Strauss.
Here.
Council Miller.
Here.
Council Cost.
Here. Hey. Please stop rise for the pledge, will you just? Pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I wanna thank each of you who took time to attend tonight. And any guests who are physically present need to fill in the meeting sign and sheet near the door. We're running a hybrid meeting again tonight, so those who want to attend remotely can do so. Do we have anybody on the remote? Yeah. Cut down. Obviously, okay. To cut down on background noise and feedback, remote attendees should mute themselves while not speaking. Staff members and guests on the agenda will need to unmute themselves to give counsel or report to counsel. Audience members may unmute themselves to speak during public hearings during citizen comments. We have a time to go through tonight, so any citizens that wish to speak during public meeting will please limit their testimony for three minutes. Also, capital total time from public hearings at thirty minutes. Uh, if you're attending remotely and you want to testify, please raise your hand and zoom meeting. Or state in comments section, you can zoom me which testify. In order to ensure that each, we have as much time as possible reserved as citizens to speak. Counsel will not answer questions or engage with those providing testimony. If you go over three minutes, you'll be asked to stop speaking. Testimony received will be used by the council in coming to decisions on proposal. Proposal. Audience demonstrations, personal attacks, destructive behavior will not be tolerated. We, the council, are here to list testimony and come to the best possible decision. With that, the first item on the agenda is public hearing for proposed uses of state shared revenue. Do you have any coming you want them? No.
And we'll do it.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Concerns? So, council must hold public hearing on proposed uses of the state's shared revenues before adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Estimated revenue amount is eleven thousand dollars. Proposed to be received and probably as follows. And do they have copies available?
I didn't hear you.
Do they have copies available, the attendant?
Uh, attendants?
Yeah.
We do not, but I can make copies if anybody would like some.
But you want someone slash no. So. Um, just quick. Review, uh, general fund state revenue sharing is eleven thousand dollars. Expenditures is general fund, city hall improvements is one thousand dollars. Expenditure park fund, parks materials and supplies is a thousand dollars. Parks maintenance is a thousand two hundred dollars. Public trees is a thousand two hundred dollars. Park improvements, a thousand six hundred dollars. And expenditures in the library fund. Construction for library shelves and ornator garden, thousand six hundred dollars. Library events and fundraising is a thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And books is two thousand one hundred fifty dollars. With that, I'll open the floor for public comment. Not online? Hey, going once, going twice. Oh. So there's no action you need to be taken, it's public hearing, this is proposed state shared revenue agenda, this may be adopted for the rest of the budget as part of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven four eight. I am one on the agenda. Next item is public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budgets. Issue statement, council must hold public hearing on approved fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget prior to adoption. The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget is attached, is approved by the budget committee and public meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Now, open the floor for public comment. Going once, going twice. Moving on. So no action will be taken as part of this public meeting, the proposed year, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget may be adopted as resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven four eight. I am M one on it.
Mary, did I give you a script?
Yeah.
You can do whatever you want.
Yeah, I'm trying to, we got a lot, I'm trying to streamline.
Sorry, it's all.
No, you did, you did, but there's kind of streamlined, so.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is public hearing proposed utility rate increase. Council must hold a public meeting on any proposed utility rate increases prior to adoption. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, which was approved by the budget committee, includes the following proposed rate increases. There's multiple tiers. Now, for water, tier one is zero to three thousand dollars is a dollar. Tier two is three thousand one to six thousand gallons is point zero three per thousand gallons. Tier three is six thousand one to nine thousand gallons, point zero five per one thousand gallons. Tier four, nine thousand one to sixteen thousand gallons is point zero five per thousand gallons. And tier five, sixteen thousand one gallons and over is ten cents per thousand gallons. But store residential is a dollar increase for each use tier. And commercials, two thousand fifty cent increase for base tier, one to two fixtures. Open it for public comment. Going once, going twice. Moving on. No actual be taken on this part of that public hearing, proposed utility rate increases may be adopted by approving resolution Q zero two five dash seven five one, item M four on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is council minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Questions, comments, corrections? No? I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve the May council minutes as, meeting minutes as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the financial reports for April twenty twenty-five. Questions, comments, concerns, corrections? You know, none? I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the April twenty twenty-five financial reports and journal entries as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Posed? Motion carries. That do we have any agenda adjustments?
We do not.
You do not, awesome. So with that, we have delegations, and that would bring us to let council share its office.
Well, that's what I'm supposed to stand in here, so you can just kind of, you just hang out over here.
There you go.
So, the report is pretty nominal, um, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, some traffic citations and warnings. A total of thirty-nine complaints investigated, most of those were our proactive stuff. You guys had zero crimes, um, so I can't too upset about that, I think that's a great thing. Um, I'm here today just to kind of give you an overview of what's been going on at the sheriff's office, we have, uh, it's been a busy year. Um, we're doing a lot of hiring, actually, in the beginning, the beginning of the year, we are up to hiring nine patrol deputies, which is a huge in the right direction for us, hopefully it's not slip, um, but we've been having problems hiring, part of it just people passing backgrounds. Um, a big part of it, part of it, like anybody else, we used to get, you know, sixty or a hundred applicants, and now we get six. Um. And it's, it's starting to slowly increase, and we're getting better applicants, so I'm hopeful for the trend that we're seeing. Uh, the other thing that we're, um, doing is right now, we're in the middle of labor negotiations, uh, I can tell you, and uh, we have passed some, but not all of that on to the cities. Um, it's probably a bigger increase than what we've normally passed on, we are passing on eight percent. Uh, that is actually quite a bit less than what we're gonna incur, and that's without us even finishing negotiations. I can tell you the rock bottom that we will settle on will be quite a bit more than that. Uh, plus we have a purse increase this year and some other things that have moved up our expenses. Um. In fact, I'm right the, right now, I'm in the middle of doing a cost analyst, or anal- analyzing the cost of a deputy for another city, and I'm not fully done with it yet, there's some things are very difficult to break out what we use for patrol versus what we use for the jail and dispatch and things like that when it comes to software and who uses what software, but um, you know, we're, I think, we landed on ninety-two sixty-two-ish. Uh, was the rate for hourly rate for what this next fiscal year is. Uh, and we're well over a hundred dollars an hour, and that's without us, that's with us not even, that's being very conservative, not dialing all those things in, because especially like software stuff, patrol uses the lion's share of it. Dispatch services and things like that, so, um. So we're trying to give the cities, uh, the best that we, best deal that we can, because we believe this is, or I believe this is a mutual relationship, always have, I've been, um, I've been doing these contracts, uh, overseeing the program, uh, for ten years now, I started as a lieutenant. But even prior to that, I spent seven years as a, as a contractor resident deputy up in Mill City, so I kind of get it. Um, and unlike, there's a lot of sheriff's offices that are just saying, if you want a deputy, you need to pay for the whole thing, because I can't hire half a person. Uh, and so they, they, they give on all the costs, and that includes when that deputy's on vacation. You don't get back to them like we do, uh, when they're on F M L A or whatever for twelve weeks and there's no back billing. Um, you guys incurred that full cost like you would if it was your own employee, um, so to speak, but uh, so that's kind of what we're going through, and, um, we're trying to be as fair as we can, we, I understand very much that most of these small towns that we have a contract with, they can't afford a whole deputy. Um, and they can't afford, you know, it's a mutual benefit, because we, it helps us put a couple extra deputies on the road with a few more contracts, um, you know, so if we can break them off for a call, that's great, but we still make sure we fulfill the actual number of hours without being a full-time person that's just assigned here. Um, it's, like I said, by far way cheaper than having your own police department, even cheaper than what many of the sheriff's offices are doing through their contract cities, so. Uh, other than that, we are, um, we haven't broken ground yet, we're still in the permitting process of adding, uh, twenty-two beds for our female, uh, wing. And, um, we have, even since, long, long time ago, when I was a deputy out on the road, uh, we often would run out of female beds. Um. We, twenty-two will be significant, um, it's gonna be dorm style, so some of our more serious, uh, problematic inmates will not be able to be in there, but we've spot checked our current population and anywhere from five people could have moved over to twenty-two could have moved over, so, um, I think it'll be a really, we're hearing from a lot of our municipal courts, our justice court that, like, especially females, because they know that they're just gonna get cited again, because we don't have room for them. Uh, it's just a revolving door, and so once in a while, we'll kind of have to say, okay, this one needs special attention and needs to go to jail this time. But it's, it's pretty well known out there that it's, you know, often almost there, I get reports twice a week, and a lot of times it's zero beds that we have available for females, so. Um. Moving through that, we're moving through the legislative session, and I think as everybody, we're waiting to see how that all turns out. Um, I will say from a law enforcement standpoint, it's a lot more benign for us than it has been in the past. So we're thankful for that, no news is good news kind of thing. Um, we're not getting some of the laws that we would like to see go forward, um, to kind of toughen up on crime a little bit, but we're also not getting a lot of, uh, uh, police tools taken away, um, from us and enfilified like we have been in past legislations in the, so. Um. Any questions for me? While I'm here, captive audience.
Well, not so much question, but do you have comments? Jen has been absolutely phenomenal.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Absolutely phenomenal.
I've heard good things.
Very proactive.
Yeah.
Even handled.
No, she just, uh, she just actually, um, loving in Strawberry Festival does Whole Heroes Day, and they ask us for something named to, uh, put forth for award every year, and she was there, our recipient, even though she could not be there, and I'm very jealous of why, because she was out playing tackle football in Newtown. She's part of the league.
Okay.
So they didn't have that, that's great, so.
She also came for our five K and ran the five K.
Yeah.
See, awesome. Awesome, well, she's a, she's a stud.
Yeah, she is.
So. Yeah. Any other questions for me, anything going on, questions of why we do something a certain way, concerns?
I don't have any, anybody else?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing Mayor did, I appreciate that she's been, three years now in a row, she's been at the five K in some capacity, and she stops by summer reading, and I see her in front of the school doing morning patrols for the grade school and stuff, she's almost, you know, I usually see her out there at least once a week parked in front of the school, so.
Yeah.
It's been great having her out here.
Yep, no, she's a great deputy, we're lucky to have her. So.
So Shane Potter will be a good hire.
We just hired him, he's, he's number, what, I think he's eight, we got one more coming next week.
He's not?
Uh, one of my buddies.
Oh, yeah.
Got hired on.
Yeah, no, he seems like he'll be a good fit. We've, we've, we're getting some really good ones, so. Um, they're young, they need some experience, they're green, I looked at how young they all were on our list, and I'm like, holy cow. We don't have one, one deputy in the rank that doesn't have, that has more than ten years' experience, so it's a new phenomenon for our office, but but they're enthusiastic as heck, so it's great.
Well, thank you very much.
You bet, and even if you think of something later, you can always email me, call me, um, might take me a day or two to get back to you, but I try to respond to everything that people have questions of. Got all kinds of questions about, you know, second amendment, I've done a lot today, just whatever reason, uh, you know, why we do certain things, waterway rights, all kinds of stuff, but I'll know about.
Well, thank you much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is council applicant interview. Council may invite the candidate to speak and may ask questions of their background, applications, or reasons they are wanting to serve. At your interviews, council may choose to move to position. I am K one, I'm in business work, council may choose to postpone their decision. The applicant we have is Derek Royas. You sure?
Yeah.
Why don't you give us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, uh, so I'm grew up in Sweet Home, um, moved to Halsey about a year and a half ago, and, uh, I'm a licensed E M T firefighter, uh, with Halsey Fire, uh, Halsey Fire. And then also, um, on the side, do welding and fabrication. Um. It's my wife Sasha and my son Noah. And, uh, yeah, so, yeah, just looking forward to be, uh, you know, more a part of the community and, uh, just, uh, try to help out where I can and learn where I can and be, be a part of the community, I'm already a part of the fire service, I'm like, well, seems like a, seems like a good fit for me to maybe, maybe help out more in the city, so. That's, uh, yeah. You guys have any questions for me?
Wait. Nobody? You actually agreed on the application. No. You will, uh, look at the vote here when it comes to, uh, new business, so.
Got it.
Council can also opt to move, vote now if we'd like to.
Okay, what, you guys want to vote now?
Why not?
Yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Like specific wording we have to use for them?
I'm not even.
Do you have any?
It is age.
There we go.
Yeah.
Fifty-nine.
Um, I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey appoint Derek Boyas to the position of city councillor to serve the remainder of the current term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, posed? Motion carries. Okay, so, one up. What's up, her?
Eric. So, we're gonna go ahead and measure both of us this, and if you're gonna take your seat on the dais, it's official.
Oh, okay.
It's, uh, so go ahead. Um, so I, say my name.
Aye, Derek Boya.
The duly appointed councillor for the city of Halsey.
Duly appointed councillor of the city of Halsey.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
I will support the constitution of the United States, the state organ.
That I will support. The constitution of the United States and the state organ.
And the charter and ordinance of the city of Halsey.
And the charter and ordinance of the city of Halsey.
I will faithfully perform my duties.
I will faithfully perform my duties.
As councillor for the city of Halsey, to the best of my ability, so help me God. No, okay, as the councillor for the city of Halsey.
As councillor of city of Halsey.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We're good to go.
All right.
And we'll have you come back later when everybody's here at the school, have you sign an oath, and then they do praise it.
Okay.
For now, you're good to go. You can.
Okay. Well, next item is citizen comments. This is the time for interested citizens and anyone in the audience to request a counsel on any item of concern that were not already addressed in the public hearings. Please let me comment to about three minutes, please start by introducing yourself and screening the address. Going once, going twice.
We have one comment that we received by phone call.
We did, okay.
Um, it is in relation to her being pronounced as.
Okay.
And the comment is that they, regardless of permanent or intermittent, you know, it's about to be ten feet.
We'll be addressed that here, but later. With a, so. Next item on the agenda is reports to council. Start with the city administrator report.
I don't seem to see my report, which really helps me a bit, but what I wanted to ask council is that for, um, concerns for time, you have it in the report.
Okay.
We have it in there, so I was going to forego kind of going over all of the things, so we don't want to talk about that, if that's okay with you. Um, and just hit a couple of the things that I said I reported on here, which is that we had the garage sale day, um, we had and the weekend party at the park. So garage sale day was really successful this year, we got, I think, close to twenty-five of garage sales that registered with us. It can be weather dependent, we can know there's gonna be sunshine, they tend to be better events, but also we tried really hard to pick, tried to pick a weekend that didn't have a bunch of like surrounding city events, turned out to be graduation. So, you know, um, but it still was really successful, we had a lot of people that registered, and something that we offered this year also was for the same class was just being on the list, so there wasn't any, like, you know, big revenue stream that came from it. But we allowed people to put booths at the park this year, um, they just had to be on our list and had to register with us, and so we paid that fee that we use for everybody that gets on the map of eight dollars, we had, uh, three booth events at the park, and so we're hopeful that um, we can keep offering that and get some turnout, but we do it, if it can grow, it will start to have more of a street fair vibe. And one of the things that we've struggled with in the past is that when we try to host these things, getting interested for food trucks and stuff.
Right.
Challenge, because it is summer, and so you get other cities that are close by, they're having bigger events that maybe are going to be more financially advantageous, and so they kind of passed us up on our requests to see if they'll come out, um, so we're just kind of chipping away at it and seeing how we can make it grow. The other thing that we did was a little event the library put on, we called it Party in the Park, and that was related to promoter summer reading program. And so we had like a spin the wheel winner prize, we had the, uh, calendar of events for summer reading, we had the registration forms for people to fill out. And we had a bunch of just really fun games, so we used our community development budget out of the general fund to support that, because one of the things that we talked about is trying to, we raised our community development fund last year's budget to try to do a little bit more of these sort of outreach things in the library, but it doesn't happen. So, it upheld something that was fun to do for the city. It was promoting our library, which is something that's really, you know, it's one of the cool things that we have in our town. And so, um, all the things that we purchased that we didn't utilize, everything that day were things that can be reused in summer reading program and at the summer barbecue, so little like, uh, lawn games, we did like a beanbag toss, bubble machines, things that are really fun, right, enticing to children. Uh, and I think that we had, you know, a decent turnout, we definitely had people come by. We had families that were shopping garage sales that some by, we sort of were able to lure them in. We have six pre-registrations, which is pretty good for us, because we've tried events, as some of you that have been doing this for a while know, we try events, we don't always get a lot of traction. So it was sunny, there was kids out riding bikes, we had all these little pinwheels that looked like flowers that were brightly colored, it was very come here, children, come learn about the library, so I'm really happy with how it went, and I think that it's a good jumping off point to continue to try to grow it. Um, and Caitlin did great, and I had to leave an hour early for another graduation, and so she, uh, sort of closed it out, and we had some councillors that came by and helped with teardowns, it's great, Mayor goodbye, Stacy came by. Uh, so, yeah, I think it was really a good event. The other things that I wanted to touch on that were not in the report was that last week I attended a workshop in Coos Bay that was for funding opportunities, because funding for infrastructure is all that we care about right now, right?
Uh-huh.
It's a lot of what we care about, uh, it was frankly the best workshop I've ever been to, it was very, very affordable to go. Um, Coos Bay is on a Tuesday, it was a Sunday night, it's apparently really, really affordable to stay in, so I went over, I worked in the hotel, I did the event for the one day, it totally cost the city a hundred and fifty dollars, so it was, yeah. I did it on the cheap, I tried really, really hard to make sure that if I'm gonna do these, it's to the benefit of the city in the greatest capacity, and it's not costing us a lot of money. Um. The people that were present at that were all the people that when we are going out for funding for these things, they'll hold the money to all the state revolving fund loans, like so some of them are loans, some of them are like loans plus forgivable grants, and it was D Q. It was R C A, which is like the rule council, it's, we use R C A for our water rate spending, which was in this packet. They also do interim loans at very low rates when you get a Fed grant that says you have to front the money, and then they reimburse you, so they do some of those things, and they also have some grants, D Q was there. Uh, the project officer for our I and I project was there, and it was just a really, really good opportunity to learn how we can better go after this money, and then how to do a good job of managing it so that we're in compliance when we have the money and have successful projects. So, that is all for me. Any questions, I'm sorry, I always forget, any questions for me?
Very quiet this time.
We did get a family that mentioned, when I was helping Caitlin do the teardown, that they liked the booth aspect of it, because most of them were bake sales, so a few of the people who were having a hard time like finding parking to like come down to the park, appreciated that they could park a selfie in front of the girls that were doing the Pioneer Christian Academy one, and just park and like buy stuff and then leave, so. They appreciated the like grab and go aspect.
Yeah, we come to park in like block model booths.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it was a lot of food, so they would park and then come back with like cookies and pies and all of the sweets.
Uh, yeah, I took advantage as well.
Fair enough.
Delicious. Anybody else? Next is C, Public Works. Is there any else, anyone brought up on that?
Um, no, I just, they're about a hundred percent tonight, this is one of the, so if there's questions that perhaps I can answer or take back to Public Works.
I did have the new part-time seasonal, uh, Public Works person started today. And, uh, I saw him in. And I saw him and Billy out there mowing to their hearts content.
Yeah, we're excited about that, thank you for reminding me.
Absolutely. Haven't had a chance to meet him yet, but. His time will come. And next is the library. Pretty self-explanatory there, the summer reading program. Or in work. Actually might go quicker than.
Yeah.
Was awesome. Uh, and then my report, um, had a couple meetings, some mayors, uh, some issues that were affecting. Pretty much every community in in Halsey. Uh, with federal funds slashed and grant opportunities and allocated money vaporizing. Um, how cities are dealing with it and that stress it's causing. Um, and then Congresswoman General Biden came for a town hall in Albany. And she held a roundtable for mayors. And so Mayor Johnson, Evolvin and I, a couple of his council members took part. And bounce some things that we're seeing locally. Uh, that she can take back to DC and hopefully re-energize the re-effect funding sources. Doge has quite a bit of damage. And to this point, there's evidently not been a single report come out from Doge. There's been no written reports come out. So. Um. Other than that's been, it's a quiet month for me. And that, uh, next item is new business. And we've already done the council application. So next to discuss is the employee wage scale twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. We asked for proven twenty twenty-five, twenty-six wage scale. Then if you wanna add to it.
Finally, I'll do a quick overview, um, pretty much just this right here, I always, uh. I do the wage scale, I utilize Western Region CPI. Superdual wage scale, because then obviously it's a little bit more accurate, it's our region of the country and out here on the west. Things tend to be more expensive, um, but based on that wage scale, uh, what, the way that I do it. And how most people do it is you'll take a year to year, so you'll go March of twenty twenty-four to March of twenty twenty-five. And so in March of twenty twenty-four, when I first ran these numbers for development of the budget, it was coming in at like two point four percent. And then it was coming in at two point six when I read April to April, so I picked two point five in the middle. Um, and we're in the middle, and then I also look at national averages for twenty twenty-five and how things are trending, that's really for CPI. And those kind of range across certain types of goods. Um, include an energy and other things like that, and so those range from two point three to two point eight. The Social Security Administration also adopted a quota to for the point five percent for twenty twenty-five, so I kind of use all of that data to try to pick a number that feels. Um, fair to our employees and that is fiscally responsible. So this proposed rate was included in our budget calculations for the twenty twenty-six, five, twenty-six budget year, um. Increasing bipolar in addition to our normal step increases helps us to remain competitive. For uh, for our employees, because where we're located. We are often competing with bigger cities that have deeper pockets, and so we already generally can't keep up with their wages. So we don't want to fall too far behind from those, those places are commutable from here, and we want to keep qualified people. In our city so that we can continue to do good work, it's, it's a high cost when you have people that are underqualified for the job or with a constant deal with turnover. Um, so sort of to, to find a happy medium. Again, this wage scale also includes the city administrator, and that's a data point. We conducted a twenty twenty-two study on wages compared to other cities that, and that was based off of cities that are of like size. Um, and so I, I like to include that as a data point, it is not what I recommend, which is this bottom bullet here. There's also a proposed wage for myself included in the scale, and the options for council are. So you can choose to remove the conversation about me entirely and adopt as amended with only, you know, all of our classified employees. People who are not salary, they're hourly, you can choosing for the, the proposed with the scale, don't recommend. It's not what I've budgeted for. You can also choose to move forward with the proposed salary and the, and the wages for regular type of hourly place. Most another salary, lots of options, you can deny the rest entirely.
This is the time I would hope for a lot of communication.
In the past, did we, have we included the city admin thing when we've done the approval, I can't remember if we did for last year's?
Last year's we didn't in July.
Right.
Um. I think that it's important to talk about it in public.
Yeah.
You know.
Right.
In a public setting, so um, we can talk about it again in July. I think last year, because it was my first one, I was not sure where to place it.
Yeah.
So this time I put it right here.
The years is set for forty hours a week. And I, and I know for a fact who are a lot more than that.
Yeah, but it's salary, so.
Yeah, right.
Salary, salary.
That's sort of a, uh, thing you and I talked about, the strategy is to not burn yourself out, so.
Yeah, I mean, I also, I guess in regards to uh city administered salary. Um, just acknowledging that it's below market, but I think that one of the things that I wanted to. Express is that for me, I also don't want my wages to be stagnant, I mean, just to be transparent, but the thing that is more important to me. Is that um, is something that the city can afford, and I've been investing in more staff time.
Yeah.
And so making sure that my staff continue to have growing wages, so that again, for all the reasons we discussed, and also bringing in a temp summer person. And also working towards hopefully hiring a three, a three-quarter time person permanently for public works, like those are what. I build council schools are, and those are the books that I have on the council wages.
So wh- what in the past is, have you had to do? Every year, every two years, every five years, has there been wage increase?
So for all staff, I propose a call every year, every predecessor did as well. Um, that was also reviewed for the city administrator annually. I believe that the city administrator at one time was just a part of the regular scale, and so that was also a part of cola. Um, and then a few years ago, it was, it was decided to discuss it in different, when it pulled it out. Do a salary, and then I have an employment contract, am I, am I believing with contract, I get like, like a minimum increase. Which is part of this proposal. Um, and we can choose cola, remove cola, you can propose something else.
Yeah.
Um.
That one point two five.
Yeah. It's like, I don't know, none of this is personal, right, like I'm, I'm what council decides, we're just talking about it.
We uh. We do it annually because CPI doesn't can change drastically over the year. It can go up, it can go down, and so if we stay at a certain rate all the time, it will eventually hurt us, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? They're entirely too low.
Well, I, I think she's doing a great job, so.
I would agree.
Right, and I just wanna read it, you, you as amended, and as amended can include me or we can read this in July. Because P J X don't go out till July thirty-first, so.
Yeah, so we could, you say we could decide this next month?
You could, yeah. Want to mull it over?
The thing that I'm. I'm impressed with is, it's always needed a additional uh utility worker. And we've never had or been able to have. The, the budget to do that, and Brian has sharpened a pencil. And, and I am, it's safe to say she can screw some fanny and make it scream. And has come up with the money to allow us to have a temporary part-time person, and hopefully, if we can see. Our way to get a full-time person to have a second utility on the, on the street and have Andy in more of a. True supervisory administrative role, you know. That, that would be my goal, and then with this wage scale, I think it would keep us more competitive. Doing that, which Halsey has always had a hard time with being able to find people, because money.
Money.
Exactly, so. Any questions, comments? Okay, that would entertain a motion.
I recommend that the governing body of the city of Halsey approve that twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six wage scale has amended.
Second.
All paper.
I.
Fairly, you want to see amendment that you would like to forward?
The full of the one point two five percent.
And then the two point five for the staff.
Correct, right.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Most carries. I have to say, and here's doing this, this has been the easiest. Wage scale conversation that we've had.
I assume two point five was reasonable, so I'm against any of it. Seems to me, yeah.
Right, and it's a big eight percent, and it's.
Yeah.
Five percent, because it's just so hard for our students down to jump around, and so, and. We've always been conservative.
Yeah.
Well, next, I'd imagine uh is proposed utility rate increases. Council's asked to consider utility rate increase for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. It's a preliminary discussion, have council reaches consensus, we'll adopt the rates via a resolution later in the agenda. Do you have any, I don't know, mate?
Yes, and so similarly to the discussion about wages, I use CPI to calculate this, can, I use it as a baseline, because in twenty twenty-three. Council had a discussion related to utility rates and concurred that. Certainly you can decide to go above it, and frankly, right now you can decide to not adopt them at all, like, but that they've utilized CPI as a tool for reviewing water rates. Um, when you have inflation, our costs go up as well, right?
Right.
Um, one of the things that. We have to unfortunately consider is how much under the market we are when we compare to other like cities. Um, and also when we look at the twenty twenty-two water rate study, that was included in the packet. We had that recommendation in twenty twenty-two, which means that for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year. The recommendation was to adopt at like a baseline of fifty dollars, and then like here's even in a more conservative approach, we're. Still a little bit higher than where we're at, we're getting closer to it, but we are now going into twenty-five, twenty-six. So we're not even at the base that they recommended for us to actually have a healthy. A move towards being able to actually have a healthy reserve for all of the capital projects that are coming. And so at a minimum, CPI I think is necessary, because it just allows us to not see further from being able to see. For very big capital projects that are coming.
Right.
Um. And it is all I'm recommending right now and all I've budgeted for. I do think that councils should prepare themselves for the future, because we're talking about wells, talking about water treatment plants. Talking about dredging the gills, like projects that are all a million and exceeding, and we have a long list of them. And that is because capital improvement projects of this scale happen every thirty or forty years. And that we're at that timeline for, for all of them, um, and so. We just have to be a little bit more proactive, and it's tough, because.
Yeah.
Money's hard for everybody, right, and so you want to be thoughtful about affordability, and making, making sure that you don't make part of families, but um. You know, I ran comparisons and when you use cities like Harrisburg and Brownsville, so you get their scales. There are some situations in which like our, our water is a little less than those cities, but those city transpoles twice their size. Harrisburg is about three times plus our size, and so the economy of scale is that they can spread that cost to pop.
Right.
That cost across more people, when you compare it to a city that is much closer to our size, style, they, I think, have like nine hundred and fifty-four people. Or something, we're like very much comparable in size, and we are. Quite a bit less than that, when you have like a really true comp. I mean, everybody has different, you know, some differences in their infrastructure to take into consideration and their needs, but. Um, I think that we're not keeping up with where the actual cost to running totally is. And so I am recommending that we do that, the CPI face, and um, council has. Has the right to approve it on my that plus.
Questions, comments?
So you said you ran the numbers just for like the two point five?
Um, for the two point five, so this is in the end to some degree random doubt, and so if you look at the table on page. Uh. The proposed rates on page seventy-seven. You can actually see for sewer. Those, the CPI increase and then rounding down, so like forty-two point five four, we run them to the nearest like whole number, so forty-two fifty. Um. And that ends up being a dollar increase of each tier, so it's like easy to implement, it's very uniform. Uh, the reason why it's two dollars and fifty cents for commercial for the base is because commercials have been racing a long time. Our tier structure is very different than everybody's, so a deeper dive into that will probably be in the future, but right now our commercial. Base is less than our base residence pay, and that doesn't feel equitable, when we haven't done a, a raise on that in quite a long time. And so it's just bringing that base up to everybody, the bottom is the same for everybody.
In twenty twenty-two, when the report came out, it was just that we have a significant raise in our base rate. And there was just, the council said there was just no way we could do that. It just wouldn't, it'd be too much, too quick, and so we decided we're trying to take a phased approach to work our way up to that base. And hope that, that suggested base doesn't keep climbing further, further out of reach, and I think that since twenty twenty-two. Done a pretty good job getting towards that, and I think with the two point five CPI, that's probably. Most advantageous for the city and for the community members. So we can discuss this some more, get a consensus, or put out a resolution, so. Sound like we'll try it all in consensus?
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to our full business. And the ever fun TMDL, total management of the matrix, proposed updated graph, or draft rather. You wanna do on that?
No, but Halsey, the maximum daily load is a requirement that we have from, from DEQ. About, uh, really, it's mostly around stormwater runoff, and to some degree, it's about our discharge from load lagoon. Um, and so it's all these different efforts that the city makes to mitigate potential pollution sources. From non-point source, so that's more of an off-stuff, point source being the lagoon, and that's, the lagoon is really about, um. Temperature, so you'll also see that this kind of got added on the dais tonight, and this is just a letter that was from DEQ. That was addressed to council, so everybody got a copy, and it says, don't forget your TMDL has to address temperature, that's a point source, that's the good discharge. Um, we know that, it is addressed. Um, we know that it is addressed. They've, they've had this implemented for a number of years. Um. And so this is just an update to our five-year plan. Uh, every five years, we have to update our plan. A lot of these things and things that we are carryovers from previous year plans. And then just a couple little updates, like the inclusion of investing in our detection equipment. So that when we do our I D I project, we can actually track our success, some of those things like that. So no major changes.
That's a good benchmark, super hit, which you guys do. I have no idea how they're even do it, but they do it. They do a good job at it. So questions, comments?
Nothing changed in the chart or anything from when we had it like a month ago, right? It's just printed bigger.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting tiny and I was like, oh, really sorry, guys.
So if nothing else, I would uh, entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey approved the updated TMDL matrix as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries. And. Next item on the agenda is third reading of ordinance two zero two five dash four four eight camping RV residency. Council is asked to review and provide feedback on the draft that leads to ordinance two zero two five dash four four eight. Camping RV residency. You can see a lot of updates in red.
Most of that are carryover updates. The the most notable changes are that we added another definition. And that was really about um, some of the things that we've encountered during enforcement activities in the city while this has been going on. And that is something that we've always talked about is that these things are hard to enforce. And so how do you create something that is enforceable, that's not like a state help? You know, it's just like, we don't have the resources for that, nor um, do I actually suspect that council wants us to do that. Um, can you use city resources for that?
Right.
And so there's a new uh, definition for evidence of residency. And this I would love to take credit for, but this was the result of a conversation with our legal Ross. And I said, how do we define residency when we go to enforce, can we have somebody stay out of it? Because that's what happens. Um, and so he said, instead of trying to sort of like develop this timeline and see if that's how council would like to approach it. How do you um, instead say these things would be sort of things that we would consider to be evidence of residency? And that's like all the slides are up all the time. It's plugged into water, it's plugged into sewer, it's plugged into all this stuff. Um, and so then if we did that, we can say, well, these are the things that let us to believe that there's residency happening by our definitions. So we added that. And then we also needed to add some language around. The evidence of residency within the code so that it ties to something. And so it says that if we see resident, if evidence of residency is present. The city will require individual society or campaign to comply with provisions of the section. And that's about the RV residency on private property. Uh, the other things that we made sure we included were um. We changed some language around it being a permit versus registration. And that was also a comfy back from from our legal. And that is that like once it's a permit, who issues the permits, how do the, it's it's kind of a different procedure. And so by continuing to call it a registration, we can still, we can still revoke that, but it just looks a little different. Um, and so we've changed some of that language. We also added the ten-foot setbacks on residential and commercial so that they were uniform across all codes. And then we also made a provision for we've we've removed extenuating circumstances language. Because that's hard to get hurt to find. Um, so that can approve in extenuating circumstances. It says approve by commissioners, like for ten days or less, city administrator, which is probably always was. Anything over possible council. And then the last thing was about setbacks. And one of the things they changed in the setbacks is that. Something can be closer, but the feedback from Ross was. Is there an appeal? How do you approve this? Like, uh, you know, who, what's the procedure for requesting an exception to the setback rule? And so I added um, the setbacks with fired permission, like permission from neighboring property owner. Um, if you're going to be closer than the ten feet and that they were just approved by administrative. So essentially how I would imagine that would look in procedures is that if you want to put it. Four feet from the fence instead of ten feet like the code says, and your neighbor says they don't care, then I have no reason not to. Um, in most situations, but. Um, that makes it easy to just stick to an administrative.
Yeah.
If they don't have permission, I I probably would not approve the setback exception. So those are the changes. We're chipping away at it.
Yeah. So the. Since you have to get to a census essentially, so you can move forward. If there's any changes or just amend, approve as amended or as recommended. Move on resolutions.
Yeah, I think this is fine. This is like the what fourth time we've.
Yeah.
Kind of parked by, and I'd spend like three or four hundred that have been changed, so.
This, I sense that this is practical, tactical warrior.
Yeah, I think a lot of us were just waiting for Ross's final whatever, so since he went through it.
Yes, and I will note that in terms of enforcement, one of the things kind of alongside the comments that we received. The uh, in relation to this is that even within this code. Um, intermittent use is like incredibly hard to define. And that's like, anytime that you've have. Somebody comes in, they were there a state one night and they're like in your RV in your driveway, that could be possible, that could be considered arminious. Um, and does that then have to comply with all these residency standards? I don't know if council wants to, I think so. It's it's just one of those things that when we talk about enforcement, that would be really hard to.
I feel like some of it, if it becomes a problem in the next year, it can be something that can be tweaked or brought up again, but I don't think. Any, any city of any size is ever going to be able to write a resolution that's like, people can't find a way. Around or under or like a gray area.
Yeah.
This is one of those resolutions or ordinances that sort of letting breathing ordinances persistently change. So. All, sound like we're all in consensus?
Yeah, that's, I think.
That moves us to ordinances and resolutions. Blind party reading by title only?
Please.
Resolution two zero two five dash seven four eight. A resolution of the city of Halsey adopting the budget for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. Imposing a tax rate of five point six zero one four for one thousand dollars. And five three zero four five for bonded debt. Questions, comment? I'd entertain a motion otherwise.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halls adopt resolution two zero two five dash seven four eight. A resolution adopting the budget for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. And imposing the tax rate of five point six zero one four for one thousand dollars. And fifty three thousand, forty five dollars for bonded debt.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is resolution two zero two five dash seven four nine. Resolution, city of Halsey certifying the eligibility of the city of Halsey to receive state shared revenue. Questions, comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven four nine. A resolution certifying the eligibility of the city of Halsey to receive state shared revenues.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Motion carries. Next item is resolution two zero two five dash seven five zero. A resolution to the city of Halsey declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenue. Questions, comments? Otherwise, I'd leave a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution two zero two five dash seven zero, seven five zero. The resolution declaring the city of Halsey's election to receive state shared revenues.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution two zero two five, seven five one. Resolution updating city hall operating fees, fees in connection with land use planning requests. Order services, store services, facility reservation rates, and repealing resolution two zero two four dash seven three nine.
I have one note on this one. It's in the notes here. The only changes are the. The two degrees that you discussed earlier in this agenda and the addition of the. There are the registration and then also the many days.
Questions, comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I recommend that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash seven five one. A resolution updating the city hall operating fees. These in connection with land use requests, water services, sewer services. Ability reservation rates and repealing resolution twenty twenty four dash seven three nine.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, last but not least, two people's on, ordinance two zero two five dash four four eight. Of ordinance, mandating the Halsey municipal code to update provisions related to camping and RV residency on private property. Do you want to add to that, Brian?
Um, no, but it comes on notes to adopt this uh, is effective thirty days after the day of. And so not become effective until the temperature.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that the governing body of the city of Halsey adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash four four eight. In ordinance amending Halsey municipal code chapter five point six oh to update provisions relating to camping and RV residency on private property.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll adjourn at, not the time it's on the clock over there.
We did it.
We did it.